I, Mayor Matt Girdon, call the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five city council meeting for the city of Somersworth to order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Vincent.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Parity Cuttenzero.
Here.
Michio.
Yeah.
Witham.
Here.
Goodwin.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
All right, Counselor Cameron will now lead the council on the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indiquina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indiquina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda is any scheduled public hearings. We have none. Item five is comments by visitors. The Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, come on up. Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and where you live, please.
There'll be a little button on the bottom of the mic. And a green light will come on.
It's green, yeah.
There we go.
Thank you.
No, thank you. My name is Keith Ferguson. I'm the commander of Raymond Estoyan American Legion Post sixty-nine in Somersworth. Currently a resident eleven in New Hampshire, but I do represent all the members at Somersworth. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you affording me this opportunity to speak to you about something that is very near and dear to us at the American Legion, as well as our friends over at the VFW. I stand before you tonight to speak as a symbol that represents more than just cloth and thread. It represents duty, sacrifice. I'm speaking of the prisoner of war, missing in action flag. Flying a POW flag at Somersworth City Hall is not just ceremonial. It's a memorial, it's a moral obligation. It's a visible pledge that we will never forget those who were captured while defending our freedoms, and that we will never abandon the search for those who have not yet come home. Every time someone walks by and sees that flag waving, it needs to send a message. The message is simple: we will remember, we will honor, and that we are still looking. Mr. Mayor, I heard you speak at our memorial service, and if I can paraphrase, you said that you were a teacher at heart, all right? You took the opportunity to speak of the poppy, and I will take this opportunity. I said that we need to teach our children that freedom has a cost. At the end of the day, the POW MIA flag, it's an educational opportunity. It's an opportunity for the younger generation to see it and ask, what does that mean? And be taught about the duty, obligation, and sacrifice. In nineteen ninety's, Congress made it official that we will fly this flag at all official buildings on Memorial Day and other events, but I'm here to say that the bare minimum is not enough. We, as proud community members, expect our city officials to lead by example, and an example that we are proud of. Our country is built on the ideas of loyalty, courage, and justice. Flying the POW MIA flag is a way to ensure that this value lives on. Let us continue to fly it till every single one of our missing service members comes home and is accounted for. Let us fly it not by our tradition, but out of duty. Thank you, and may we never forget.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you giving me this time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Others who wish to speak this evening? Anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. The chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, as well as the resignation of Conservation Commission Member Sean Collins effective June fourth. Do you have a motion, Counselor Witham?
Move for the approval of the consent calendar.
Counselor Witham moves that the consent calendar be approved as presented, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Abstain.
Okay. One abstention. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments this evening by councillors? Counselor Witham?
Yes, thank you to the commander for speaking and bringing to our attention the POW MIA flag. I think many in the room know that one of my pastimes is taking care of the Noble Pines Ball Field, and I could tell you that the Raymond Estoyan Post has been very benevolent in helping to support our activities up there way back when Ray himself was still the commander and still with us. And we put up a new scoreboard, thanks to the help and generosity of the Post and the VFW, and also put up a thirty-five-foot flagpole, very prominent up there. And we have been flying the POW MIA flag. I could tell you that the winds up there are rugged at times, and it has fallen into disrepair, and I took it down, I don't know, maybe a month ago now. So I welcome some direction as to where we can get another one, and I probably have to get the size. I think it's three by five, but if someone could link up with me after, we'll talk about getting that back up there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you Commander and other members for coming forward. Counselor Witham, I've had to say ditto because, yeah, he said it very well. I have a couple of things I just want to bring up. Normally, we bring up comments at the end of the meeting, but I thought I'd bring them up tonight, just to kind of get, I like to bring them up so maybe other members can think about it and then comment in the end. One of the things that, and I reached out to Counselor Witham because he's the chairman of Public Works, but he's also a member of the planning board for the city side, and it was a concern with the new solar array that's on Blackwater Road. So, you know, when we make decisions here sometimes, until it gets done, you know, you sometimes don't have the big picture. And the solar array project is well underway, and, you know, as I drove by, I'm like, wow, it's quite a field. And I'm all for solar power. The reduction of city electricity is wonderful, but the site, it was brought to my attention by a couple of other constituents, the site, or it being unsightly. Some may say it looks good, some may not, but maybe we can somehow visit, and I had a good conversation with Counselor Witham about, the planning board went back and forth, so to speak, on making a screen, some type of screen. I just think that maybe a natural screen there would be up on the, by the edge of the road. It seems to me there's enough property there or land there that we could put a screen of some type of trees there or bushes that grow up straight so we don't have to see it. Just, I bring it out to you, councillors, and the rest of the community, to see what your thoughts are. It'd be appreciated if you reached out to me or other councillors. Let me step back. First of all, I want to welcome onboard the new city manager. Thank you. His executive assistant and the finance director. Wow, three hits in one month, like, it was like, I just, welcome aboard. This is, the city is a really good team. All the people that work for the city, the employees, they're all, they're all well put together, like a well-run team. It's really a good place to land, so welcome. One other comment I had, or actually two, was maybe we can revisit the utility company that dug the gas line down Blackwater Road. One of the things that irked me is this, is, you know, you dig something up, I like to have it put back the right way. It seems like a roller coaster on the side of the road, and to me, processed gravel, there's two different types, processed gravel and regular gravel. Gravel seems to be sand that has rocks in it, and it could be three-quarter stone, bigger. But processed gravel is rocks that are crushed down, and when it's on the side of the road, it's like concrete. And I think maybe the city should come up, and maybe we do have it, I just haven't seen it, but we should make contractors who take stuff apart in the city use that, because that stuff is like concrete. Just some thoughts. One more comment: when does the line company start? I see somebody all painting the lines in the street, but, okay, yeah, it's, I just, I saw it on the agenda, but I just, it's been piecemeal. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Counselor Goodwin?
Just want to piggyback on Counselor Vincent's comments on the solar field. I have not seen it in person yet, but I was on the planning board when that project was approved, and I was incredibly vocal about the lack of screening landscaping and beautification that was planned for that project. I was unsuccessful in convincing the other members of the planning board, but I have said it here on council, I've said it on planning board, and I'll say it again, that I think it's hypocritical of the city to not meet its own site plan review requirements in terms of landscaping and beautification. The city is exempt from our own rules, so we do not need to meet those requirements, and I think that's wrong. I think that we should be leading by example and showing what we want others to, who are investing in our community, to do. And even just like logically, you know, something that has a net positive impact like a solar field, we want to be well-received, and the way to make it well-received is to, you know, make it as appealing, attractive as possible, minimize the impact on the butters. That site is, you know, challenging for beautifications, so like, a green buffer might be difficult because it's a superfund site, so digging down is actually not permitted. I'd mentioned to the engineers when we were talking to them, could you make a berm? Could you bring in fresh soil and berm it up? Well, you know, there's, I think there is other ways you could get at making it beautiful, but I just want to say I agree with Counselor Vincent, and I think that is money well-spent, and moving forward that we should be more mindful about our infrastructure investments. The dollars to make something attractive are de minimis in the scope of the work that we do. There's an agenda item tonight talking about the stamp pipe. I think that's another excellent example, and it's like, yeah, it's going to maybe cost a little bit more to put it in the right spot and make it look good, but it is the right thing for the city to do that in long term and to show that we care about how we look, so I agree.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Counselor Gibson?
I'm not going to go into everything, but I want to welcome aboard the new members of the city organization. Wish you the best of luck going forward. We're going into some challenging times, I believe, and you'll probably be earning your paychecks. Seconding Counselor Vincent's comments, it's really funny. You drive up Blackwater Road, and the issue with the paving that was done improperly, and then you pull up to the intersection of one oh eight, and Mannheim has done a great job of landscaping the property facing onto Blackwater Road. And in years to come, I'm sure those trees are going to grow and going to completely screen the car lot from the road. And I'm sure, I don't know, because I didn't see anything in the planning board notes that I can find, but I don't know when exactly it would have come up at the planning board. But to second the other councillors, I don't think it's right that the city should be involved in a project where we have expectations on private owners and for what would seem to be a relatively inexpensive proposition to fail to follow through on our own. I think that's going to be an ugly sight to drive up Blackwater Road every day and see that one is completed, besides the fact of, I don't know how bad the glare factor is going to be from that, driving up Blackwater Road. I'm not an expert on that subject, but I would think that screening would help minimize it if there is any reason to consider that. That's it.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Counselor Barry?
Just to go back to the POW MIA flag, I did talk to a constituent last month about this, and I just want to put it out there, a couple of suggestions that maybe we might be able to get another flag stand where one could stand in chambers and also at our memorial just down the road over by our museum, that maybe, I understand we have some constraints to the city hall flag pole and how many flags we can fly, but maybe we could get a permanent one there.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Okay, moving on. We'll go to agenda item eight, which is communications. We have none. Item nine is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We have none. Brings us to ten, which is the mayor's report. I have a handful of things to report out, so bear with me this evening. Again, I guess what happens when we have one meeting a month, things pile up. First is, I would like to report out about the POW flag. I had also been reached out to by a number of folks about this. Thank you to Mr. Ferguson for speaking to it tonight, as well as the members of the VFW and the American Legion for being here. In our conversations, had expressed interest in having one at city hall, and thanks to our new city manager, we're hoping that we will be able to get that up quite soon. He's done a lot of groundwork to make sure that we're able to get a POW flag hanging, actually, at the city hall flag pole within the next couple of weeks, I would say. We're hoping we can get that up. Don't hold me to the timeline, but it is happening. I also want to let folks know that there is one at the Veterans Memorial, and we are hopefully going to get that one at the Pines replaced. I think that's a great idea, Counselor Witham, so thank you for bringing that up. But again, a great example of how community outreach and just like conversations with folks can actually make things happen, so really appreciate the advocacy on that. And it was an easy ask, and I was happy to, happy to forward that over to our city manager who's able to make that happen, so thank you. Also, I'd like to welcome all our new city employees. Thank you for being here this evening. Very excited for our new city manager, for our new finance director, and our new executive assistant here at city hall. Great, great, great news that we have them with us. So glad you came. Thank you for taking time out of your evening to be here, everyone, though you have to be here, sorry, but thank you for being here. We're really excited to have you all. It's quite exciting that you all got to kind of come in together and kind of join the city as a unified front. I think you will hopefully find a very, very welcoming group of employees here at city hall. They're a phenomenal bunch, and I guarantee they've welcomed you with open arms, so quite excited to have you. Next on my agenda, I wanted to update council about a meeting that I had. I had a meeting on June twenty-fifth with Michael Williams, who's the Director of Operations for Coast Bus. I have some unfortunate service changes that I need to kind of report out about from this meeting, if you haven't seen it already. For those who are familiar, Coast Bus has been struggling with funding for some time now, and sadly, they will see a reduction in funding from the federal government this year. The federal government has essentially reformulated how it distributes funding related to transportation due to the newest census data. It has now determined that our region will particularly, or in particular, will see a reduction in funds in the federal budget. And so, again, even though we, as a council body, voted to increase funds for Coast, they were unable to offset some of the losses that they're going to see from the federal reductions, and thus unfortunately will be making difficult decisions about service reductions for a number of their routes. The change in service will thankfully not be immediate, but it is taking place effective as of October sixth, so it is in the near future. Hopefully, however, this gives residents time to plan and schedule if they do in fact utilize the service routes that are seeing reductions or cuts. So, Somersworth will see one of its routes discontinued entirely, so Route one hundred, which is the route that brings folks to and from the shipyard, will no longer be provided that route is done. Another route will unfortunately end a bit earlier, so that's Route twelve, which will see, this is essentially the route along Route one oh eight for folks who are not familiar. This will end its northern route at seven thirty PM every day, and it will end its southern route every day at seven fifty-five, so it's a little shortening on, at the end of the day. I think they had a later, an eight o'clock or an eight-thirty route that is currently in effect, that's now being reduced down to seven thirty and seven fifty-five. Thankfully, though, there is no impact or changes on our city's main route, which is Route one, and actually, this route still remains to be the most well-road for all of Coast, which I think is great news. And again, I just want to stress that these changes won't take place until October sixth. If you have any further questions, Coast has information on their website. Working with them to hopefully get access to the press release and the information on their website, so we can post it on our city website as well. But yeah, the Coast wanted to make it known that these were certainly, you know, impactful, and they're, it's unfortunate, and they are upset that these were the choices that had to be made, but they wanted to stress that this was five total runs out of a current total of forty-six in the city of Somersworth. So though significant and unfortunate, they did want to make it known that it was, they've chose the routes that would be the least impactful for their ridership, and it was the least-attended routes of all. So they're hopeful that people will still be able to use their services and get where they need to go even with these reductions. Obviously, again, please don't hesitate to reach out to them if you have further questions. Also this evening, I do have some exciting information after some unfortunate information, which I'd like to announce, that is, out of over three hundred potential projects, Somersworth has been selected as a finalist by Senator Gene Shaheen's office for a congressional appropriation of almost six point nine million dollars for our Somersworth Library project. This would mean that if selected by, or excuse me, for the congressionally-directed spending by the Senate Appropriations Committee, and then if passed by Congress, Somersworth would then receive a grant of six point nine million dollars in our fiscal year twenty twenty-six to be able to use towards our library renovation and accessibility project. Obviously, this would be an immense help for our community. It would cover more than ninety-three percent of the proposed project costs as of right now, saving our taxpayers millions and millions of dollars, and delivering a beautiful new library for residents who have been desperately waiting for these improvements. I know I have been. This would essentially be an almost-free library for the city, and it would allow for the children's room to be moved out of the basement. It would allow for modernization of the interior and an increase of shelf space at the library, and it would also create a new community meeting space, but I think most importantly, it would allow for the entire library to now be ADA compliant and accessible for all members of our community, whereas right now, that is not the case. So, so thankful for Senator Shaheen and her office for her support on this project, and I am continually amazed at her ability to advocate and support for our community at the federal level. I will say, before finding out that we were selected for this, I was actually ready for the city to move forward with this project. We, you know, had our final meeting where we presented the plans and what it looked like and the cost, and had we bonded for this, for the entirety of the project, not, if we had not waited, it would have increased the tax rate by twenty-four cents just for the bond alone, which is a large increase when we are trying to weigh so many other city projects and initiatives and plans that we are working towards. And so, I'm really thankful that we actually will now have that, hopefully, that much more wiggle room in our budget, because we won't be having to pay for that if and when this is finalized. Again, we don't have to worry about the twenty-four cents at this point, but I will ask the council that we kindly wait on moving forward with this project until we have final confirmation of the passage of the congressional-directed spending, which hopefully will be within the next months, series of months. I reached out to Senator Shaheen and her office, though we don't have a final word on when this will be finalized, they did make it clear that if all goes to plan and this passes in the federal budget, we will hopefully be able to act on this before the end of twenty twenty-five. So again, a small couple of months delay, I think, is worth ensuring that we can save ourselves almost seven million dollars. Once I have confirmation, I will look for a vote from council on accepting the congressional-directed spending grant, and then I will ask the council to determine how to best cover the remaining costs, if any, for this project. I would anticipate it would be through some sort of bond anticipation notice or through our general fund use, but certainly at this point, we don't have to worry about that just yet. At that point, once we've accepted it and decided to move forward with the funds and the project, I will develop a library building committee, which will then oversee the next steps for the library redevelopment. But again, cannot express my gratitude for Senator Shaheen, and I really am excited for what our community could potentially receive. Again, we're ninety-nine percent of the way there. We don't have it a hundred percent, but it is looking extremely promising. All that needs to happen is this needs to pass at the federal level, so I would say reach out and express your interest in this project if you haven't yet. That's it. I actually thought I had more than that, but that concludes my report. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item eleven, which is reports of standing committees. First up, we have Finance Committee, Counselor Witham.
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met last on June thirtieth, eight AM here at city hall. Three members were in attendance. The mayor had appointed Counselor Michio as a temporary appointment in place of Counselor Barry, who could not attend. A number of city staff were here as well. We had a relatively brief agenda, the most pressing item of which was to approve funding to cover the soil pile that is contaminated with PFAS that came from the construction of the new fire station. I think as councillor and many residents know, that pile of soil was stockpiled adjacent to the fire station at the city gravel pit and was temporarily covered with some lightweight plastic material. EPA got involved, as well as New Hampshire DES. The lightweight plastic was troublesome to keep in place. Whenever it was windy, it blew off, we had to put it back and repair it, and then we were under a direction of both EPA and New Hampshire DES to then leave it alone. Don't worry about covering the pile, while they did some additional investigation. Well, fast forward a number of months, and the EPA is now telling us, oh, you now need to cover the pile with a more substantial cover. And without getting into details, we're just looking at a much heavier plastic, and the best description I can give to anybody, if you've seen the salt piles down in Portsmouth, it's very heavy-duty, white plastic with like sandbags that keep it in place, it is that sort of cover that we would be putting over this soil pile. And the expenditure to do that was estimated at just under thirty-five thousand dollars. They actually need to use a crane because they don't want anybody walking on the pile. It needs to be lowered on like a parachute. It's quite an involved process, and then weighted down. And that'll be its final disposition until someday the EPA determines what they want to do with PFAS-contaminated soils, because right now, there is no known disposition for this. No one knows what to do with it, so it'll just stay in its cocoon for eternity, perhaps, right? So, so the Finance Committee authorized, moving forward with an expenditure not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars to more permanently cover this pile of soil, and that passed four zero, that is within Finance Committee's spending authority. The other item that we looked at were the lease purchase agreements for two pieces of rolling stock here in the city. One is a new police patrol vehicle, and one is a new DPW plow truck. The committee felt comfortable in moving forward with both of these. There are a number of resolutions that speak to the acquisition of this rolling stock. I would encourage council to consider waiving rules for a second reading this evening. Rolling stock, particularly the plow equipment, is going up at about ten percent a month Rolling stock, particularly the plow equipment, is going up at about ten percent a month with tariffs and all of that, and is also, just acquiring the equipment, again, the plow truck is a, is a good example. If we order it now, we could have a good chance of having it before winter. If we wait even a month, that, that makes that in jeopardy. So I'd encourage us to waive rules on the various pieces of legislation this evening to move forward with the purchase of that rolling stock. Those were all of our agenda items. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next up is Government Operations Committee, Counselor Mishu.
And no report this evening.
Thank you. Next is Economic Development Committee, Counselor Goodwin.
No report.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Counselor Peppin.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Public Works and the Environment Committee, Counselor Witham.
No report, but I will work with the city manager in the coming weeks to maybe schedule a meeting of the Public Works and Environment Committee, just for an update on a number of projects that are underway or should be underway. Good example, pavement line striping. Thank you, Counselor Vincent. We have tried to birddog that a little bit. And another agenda item, just to plant the seed with our new city manager and with Director Babinski, I'd like us to have a, or at least begin a discussion of a holistic look at sort of DPW responsibilities. And are we utilizing what are rather thin resources in terms of staffing and equipment in the right areas? Humble opinion, I don't think so. I think we need to do better. Examples are, should we pick up brush at curbside? Should we, should we pick up Christmas trees? We don't deliver them, so they get to a house. Why is it that we have to pick them up? Again, we just have finite resources that I think we need to better direct to get other more important projects done. So I'd like to begin that conversation with the director and with the city manager, and maybe there's change, maybe there's not, but I think we at least owe ourselves that conversation. So more to come there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Recreation Committee, Counselor Cameron.
No report.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is Item 12, which was reports of special committees. Are there any reports of special committees? Counselor Peppin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had an E-911 committee meeting on July 2nd at 3:30 at the Police Department, in the conference room up there. The first thing was, first thing on the agenda was passed in the minutes of June 6th. Motion was made and it passed. The first thing on the agenda, and it was supposed to be the only thing on the agenda, was textile way, which is the old Bleachery area. Schimberg sent us a letter, basically, they would like to try to get the numbering system down, and they'd like to try to have the numbering system something similar to what they have in the other developments that they have and stuff like that. So they were working on, we worked on that for a bit. Under other things, the Old Street Project, which is 22 Green Street, that will be the address of it. We went over the numbering system on that, where the main interest is going to be basically on the second story. One of the things that we're trying to follow is the E-911 guidelines, and anything below grade will come with a B. So, so we're trying to stay within the guidelines of that. So, and the rest of the numbers will be just like the rest of the buildings and that we are numbering now. Doyle Court, that was a new name that we, that one of the vendors that proposed to us, one of the contractors, is the proposed pickleball court. Evidently, that has fell through. He is no longer going to do that. I guess evidently, there's going to be one in Dover, and he feels the competition's going to be a little, they had to want to be with as well. So he's going to be putting in four, four units in there. So this is one of the names that he proposed to us. We went through the 91 State Committee to see if it was, they were okay with it, we were okay with it, so we kind of like approved it. So you'll probably see a resolution coming in the near future for that. And we adjourned at 3:55.
Thank you. Other special committee reports? Yes, Counselor Cameron.
Just an update from my cultural and arts on the muralist. I've been in touch with him. We originally had a start date of July 28th. It's been moved up to Saturday, July 26th, and I have been in touch with Little League about getting the sign off the dugout, and that's where I stand with that right now.
Great, thank you. And other reports? Counselor Witham?
Yes, the mayor's committee to look at the Somersworth High School athletic fields and related infrastructure. We met a number of times in the spring. That committee sort of acquiesced around what the project needs were. We began a conversation around prioritizing and phasing, and we, we then hit budget season and now summer, so the committee has been dormant for a few months. I do look to resurrect that committee. The next phase of, of that committee, as directed by the committee, is to meet with maybe the Dover High Principal or another member from Dover to talk about how they got to where they weren't able to develop price proposals. We're thinking that there might be the need to tee up some soft cost in future budgets for like architects and engineering based upon committee needs, so we know where to point the arrows, so to speak. So look for our meeting in the next month or two of that group to meet with the officials from Dover. I will communicate with Superintendent Shea, who said he would be glad to sort of coordinate that meeting and get that underway.
Thank you. Other reports of special committees? Okay, seeing that, I will turn it over to City Manager Morph, who would deliver his first manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are several resolutions under new business this evening. The first three, A, B, and C, all refer to what Counselor Witham had addressed in the latest Finance Committee. The first resolution would be to authorize the city manager to order a police cruiser to be funded by a lease purchase agreement. The second one is related to the Public Works Plow Truck. And then the third one is a bit of a housekeeping item, I would describe, to authorize the city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of city vehicles and equipment. And I thank the Assistant Mayor for his willingness to support the concept of postponing, of waiving second reading this evening, so that we may begin those purchases. Also, Resolution 426, Item D, relates to the state revolving loan fund appropriation that we have received for our wastewater treatment facility. This, as you know, is the latest in a series of planned improvements for our wastewater treatment facility, with the first having been completed in 2021. This project cost is estimated, based on the preliminary engineering that has taken place, at $22 million. That is the amount of the loan that is being requested approval for. There's additional information in your packet. For borrowing of this sort, a public hearing is required, as is a two-thirds vote. That would be at your next meeting.
Public hearing will be scheduled to that objection.
The next resolution is related to the item before it, which is authorizing the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering for final engineering and design for the wastewater treatment plant. The value of that contract is $1,082,402. Again, this is a large project at $22 million, and the estimates are based on the preliminary engineering that Wright Pierce has already undertaken. And while no one relishes signing a $1 million engineering and design contract, it is within the standards for construction projects of that size at about seven percent. So that will also be brought back for public, for your, at your next meeting for a vote and to pass second reading. Last, the author, requesting authorization to contract with Waste Zero of Raleigh, North Carolina. This is the vendor that provides the city with the specially-marked bags for our waste collection system, and this essentially extends our current contract under the current terms for another two years. Under other this evening, we have the vote to accept the Public Works Environment Committee's recommendation of the proposed location of the new Hamilton Street water tank at Noble Pines. This is the replacement project of that standpipe. The backup and rationale for the recommendation from the committees included in your, in your packet. And I spoke with the staff today, who informs after this meeting, after this decision or vote, we'll be able to proceed with the final engineering and preparation for that project, which is already funded through the enterprise funds. Next, under Item B, is to vote to waive the excavation moratorium for a gas line on Mount Vernon Street. This request comes in as a result of our moratorium for that road shall not be cut into prior to three years after the completion of a pave, the final paving. The expiration for this particular road comes at the end of September, and by virtue of the cooperation of the homeowner, in exchange for being able to do this on a more favorable timeline, a few months before September, we're able to compel a more robust patch for the road that will, we likely would not be able to compel following the moratorium. So we are, I am recommending you move forward with that. Informational items, the mayor summarized frankly, more effectively than I did, and in more detail, related to the coast bus announcement and route changes, but those are included, a summary in your packet. And finally, pavement marking work. We under, K-5 out of Rockland, Mass., is scheduled to do the long-line paintings on July 31st with a rain date of August 1st, and pavement markings, that's a hand crew, August 4th to August 7th with a rain date of August 10th to August 12th. Appreciate the community's patience with these, with this schedule. There were several challenges in this industry related to weather this year, and, but we'll, we'll get the job done later this summer. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, finally, I'd just like to thank everyone for the warm welcome I have received here. I had a wonderful week last week, the first five days, and the staff, I was told during our interviews, that we had a very good and dedicated staff here, and I had no doubt about that, and, and this week, they would have made you all proud with all of the assistance and coming together that they have done at a time of significant transition, which we are, we are going about. So thank you for that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. That brings us to Agenda Item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments the following are up for nomination this evening. First up is Author, excuse me, Arthur Roseberry Yogder for appointment to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years, and Mark Richardson for appointment to the Cemetery Trustees for a term of five years. The nominees will remain in nomination until our next regularly-scheduled meeting. Brings us to Item 14, which is items laid upon the table. We have none. Brings us to Item 15, which is unfinished business. There's one item, ordinance 25-25, which is to amend Chapter 19, so, ordinance six is 14 Historic District by adding exempt activities. I believe still remains with the Economic Development Committee. Is that correct, Chair Goodwin?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That will then bring us to Item 16, which is new business. The chair recognizes-
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to move to suspend council rules to have Resolutions 126, 226, and 326 moved into second reading immediately after their first reading.
Counselor Witham moves to have Resolutions 126, 226, and 326 moved into second reading immediately after, seconded by Counselor Vincent. The question for the council is on the suspension of rules for a second reading on both Resolutions 126, 226, and 326. Discussion. Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, eyes are here to have it, eyes have it. Motion passes. So the chair recognizes the clerk for a first and second reading on Resolution 1-26, which is to authorize the city manager to order a police cruiser, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement. City Clerk.
Resolution number 126, to authorize the city manager to order a police cruiser, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of Somersworth Capital Improvement Program proposes a replacement schedule for a police cruiser to maintain fleet integrity and reduce maintenance costs. And whereas the City of Somersworth's fiscal year 2026 adopted budget provides funding a down payment for a police cruiser with accessory equipment to be acquired through a lease purchase agreement. And whereas city staff has evaluated the advantage of the use of a standard vehicle manufacturer acquisition policy, and recommends the use of the New Hampshire State bid list for Ford vehicles as the most efficient method of procuring these new vehicles. And whereas the Finance Committee supports the ordering of this vehicle and equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to order a new police cruiser and to utilize the New Hampshire State bid list, which will be funded through a lease purchase agreement. Sponsored by Councilors David A. Witham, Martin Peppin, Kenneth S. Vincent, Richard Misho, approved city attorney.
Thank you. If we could have a second reading on Resolution 1-26.
Resolution number 126, to authorize the city manager to order a police cruiser, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
Thank you. Resolution 1-26, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment, I will look for a motion on Resolution 1-26. Counselor Witham?
Move for the adoption of the resolution.
Counselor Witham moves for the adoption of Resolution 1-26, seconded by Counselor Vincent. A motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 1-26. Discussion. Seeing none, if you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 1-26, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Misho?
Yes.
Resolution 1-26 has been adopted. The chair recognizes the clerk for a first and second reading on Resolution 2-26, which is to authorize the city manager to order a Public Works plow truck and associated winter plow equipment, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement. City Clerk.
Resolution number 226, to authorize the city manager to order a Public Works plow truck and associated winter plow equipment, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of Somersworth's Capital Improvement Program proposes a replacement schedule for Public Works equipment to maintain fleet integrity, standardized equipment, and reduce maintenance costs. And whereas the City of Somersworth's fiscal year 2026 adopted budget provides funding a down payment for a new plow truck with associated winter plow equipment to be acquired through a lease purchase agreement. And whereas city staff has evaluated the advantage of the use of a standard vehicle manufacturer acquisition policy, and recommends the use of the New Hampshire State bid list for vehicles as the most efficient method of procuring certain new, certain new vehicles. And whereas the Finance Committee supports the ordering of this vehicle and equipment. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to order a new Public Works plow truck with accessory equipment and to utilize the New Hampshire State bid list, which will be funded through a lease purchase agreement. Sponsored by Councilors David A. Witham, Martin Peppin, Kenneth Vincent, Richard Misho, approved city attorney.
Thank you. And if we could have a second reading on Resolution 2-26.
Resolution number 226, to authorize the city manager to order a Public Works plow truck and associated winter plow equipment, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
All right, thank you. Resolution 2-26, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Amendment?
Yes, I'd like to offer an amendment, just so it reads consistently with the police cruiser language. In the third, whereas, talks about the use of the New Hampshire State bid list for vehicles, it should be for Peterbilt vehicles for fleet integrity. So just to add that note, that was discussed at the Finance Committee, that this would be a Peterbilt vehicle, so I just want to include that here as well.
The use of standard Peterbilt manufactured, is that what it is? Sorry, I'm just trying to find-
Yeah, so the third, whereas, would read, whereas city staff evaluate the advantage in use of a standard vehicle manufacturer acquisition policy, recommends the use of the New Hampshire State bid list for Peterbilt vehicles. So it's just adding that brand in that column.
Okay. Counselor Witham proposes an amendment to include Peterbilt in the third, whereas. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Gibson. Again, the motion for the council is to amend Resolution 2-26 to include the language Peterbilt in the third, whereas. Discussion. Counselor Gibson.
Yeah, second, because I wanted some clarification. What's the significance of Peterbilt versus other trucks? What's the significance of Peterbilt versus other trucks?
Counsel Witham?
So, council, there was a council resolution adopted many, many years ago for fleet standardization that we would continue to buy the same brand instead of going out to bid for all kinds of brands, hence why we've gone with the Ford Interceptor for our police vehicles year after year. And the same holds true for the plow trucks. That way, in terms of fleet maintenance, they're buying the same sorts of filters, the same sorts of this, that, and the other thing, they don't have to stock for all sorts of different trucks. So, we've tried to be consistent. And again, it was discussed at Finance that the piece of equipment they're looking to get is Peterbilt, so I just wanted to endorse that here.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counsel Gibson, you're still recognized, go ahead.
Has it been looked at? I understand standardization, but is there a price differential between the Peterbilts and other brands that are available through the bid process?
I'd defer to Counsel Witham.
Yeah, and I could defer to Director Babinski if council so chose to go there. I know that when we moved in this direction a number of years ago, the Peterbilt price point was not dissimilar from many of the other manufacturers. There are differences for all of them, but it wasn't significant. I don't know if that remains true or not.
Yeah, without objection, if you'd like, we can bring up-
I see a nod of the head from the back of the room, so I would assume he agrees with Counselor Witham. Just to save you some footsteps.
Yeah, seriously. All right, you're still recognized, Counsel Gibson, are you all set?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Thank you, Counsel Peppin?
I'd just like to comment a little bit about that truck, too. It's a little bit more heavier than what we were running before, too, that truck that we were buying before, and we've had very, very good luck with this brand, so it's probably good to stay with that brand, because it's been holding us, it's been doing the city very well, so, all in favor of it.
Other discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of the amendment, you'll state by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, the amendment has been adopted. At this point, resolution 2-26 is open to further amendment. No amendment being offered, I'll look for a motion on the amended version of resolution 2-26. Counsel Witham?
Move for its adoption as amended.
Counsel Witham moves for the adoption of amended resolution 2-26, can't talk, seconded by Counsel Gibson. The motion for the council is on the adoption of amended version of resolution 2-26, discussion. Seeing none, if you're in favor of the adoption of the amended version of resolution 2-26, you'll state by saying yes. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yep.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, resolution 3-26 has been adopted, thank you. Bring us to resolution 4-26. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution 4-26, which is to appropriate funds from the state revolving loan fund for improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. City clerk?
Resolution number 426, to appropriate funds from the state revolving loan fund for improvements to the wastewater treatment facility, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City Council adopted resolution 4325 on March 3rd, 2025, granting authority to file an application to the state revolving fund for a loan to fund wastewater treatment facility improvements. And whereas the project costs include engineering, construction, and any other ancillary costs associated with the project. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that an amount not to exceed $22 million is appropriated to improve the wastewater treatment facility. And be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to borrow up to $22 million from the state revolving loan fund, and the city manager is authorized to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to take any other actions relative to this project determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by counselors David A. Witham, Kenneth S. Vincent, Martin Peppin, Laura Barry, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 4-26, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution 5-26, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for final engineering design for the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility improvements. City clerk?
Resolution number 526, to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for final engineering design for the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility improvements, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of Somersworth was approved for a $22 million state revolving loan to support the engineering and construction of the Phase II wastewater treatment facility improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineering was contracted to provide preliminary design and engineering services of the Phase II improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineers provided city staff with a proposal in the amount of $1,082,402 to provide final engineering design for the Phase II improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for the final engineering design for the Phase II improvements of the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility for an amount of $1,082,402, and take any and all other such actions relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding, counselors Crystal Parity Catanzaro, Laura Barry, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Excuse me, resolution 5-26, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution 5-26, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for final engineering design for the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility improvements, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of Somersworth was approved for a $22 million state revolving loan to support the engineering and construction of the Phase II wastewater treatment facility improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineering was contracted to provide preliminary design and engineering services of the Phase II improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineers provided city staff with a proposal in the amount of $1,082,402 to provide final engineering design for the Phase II improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for the final engineering design for the Phase II improvements of the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility for an amount of $1,082,402, and take any and all other such actions relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding, counselors Crystal Parity Catanzaro, Laura Barry, approved city attorney. Thank you. Resolution 5-26, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution 6-26, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for final engineering design for the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility improvements, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of Somersworth was approved for a $22 million state revolving loan to support the engineering and construction of the Phase II wastewater treatment facility improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineering was contracted to provide preliminary design and engineering services of the Phase II improvements. And whereas Wright Pierce Engineers provided city staff with a proposal in the amount of $1,082,402 to provide final engineering design for the Phase II improvements to the wastewater treatment facility. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to contract with Wright Pierce Engineering of Portsmouth, New Hampshire for the final engineering design for the Phase II improvements of the Somersworth wastewater treatment facility for an amount of $1,082,402, and take any and all other such actions relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding, counselors Crystal Parity Catanzaro, Laura Barry, approved city attorney. Thank you. Excuse me, resolution 5-26, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution 6-26, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with Waste Zero of Raleigh, North Carolina to distribute specifically marked bags to authorized vendors as part of the city's paper bag program. City clerk?
Resolution number 626, to authorize the city manager to extend a contract with Waste Zero of Raleigh, North Carolina to distribute specially marked bags to authorized vendors as part of the city's paper bag program, July 14th, 2025. Whereas the city sells specially marked bags designed for refuse through various commercial and retail outlets to cover the cost of collection and disposal of the city's municipal solid waste program. And whereas the current program operates by Waste Zero selling bags to retailers, keeping an appropriate inventory on hand, accepting orders, and making weekly deliveries to the various commercial and retail outlets. And whereas the City Council had previously approved an agreement with Waste Zero for bag distribution and inventory control on March 18th, 2019, where they accept orders directly from approved vendors and deliver bags directly on the city's behalf. And whereas the proposed agreement has a term of two years to coincide with the operating plan to shift to cart-based residential solid waste collection system. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to contract with Waste Zero of Raleigh, North Carolina to distribute specially marked bags to authorize city vendors and to take any other action relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Girding and Counselor Crystal Parity Catanzaro, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 6-26, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to items under other, we have two. First up, we have a vote to accept the Public Works Environment Committee's recommendation for the proposed location of the new Hamilton Street water tank, which is at the top of Noble Pines. This is our replacement project. What are the wishes of the council? Counsel Witham?
Yes, by way of background, and then I'll get to a motion if that's appropriate.
That's fine.
All right. So, this has had a bit of a journey. There were three locations that were ultimately sort of identified by Wright Pierce Engineers doing the work for the city on this project. Public Works and Environment Committee at our June meeting, I believe on June 12th, actually met on site up at the Noble Pines and did a walking tour with the engineer, engineering firm Wright Pierce. They had done some preliminary layout work and identified where the three locations would be with painting and marking on the ground outlining where the base of the new water tower could be. I would define them as location A, B, and C. Location A, if you are coming up Hamilton Street, would be to the right of the existing standpipe, sort of right on top of a butterfly garden that's there. So, the location A is between the existing water tank and the first playground there, so envision that. Location B is to the left, as you look at the tank, basically would have but the skateboard park and would actually take up a portion of the skateboard park, which would require us to relocate that element if we so chose. And then location C is around the back of the water tower, what I would call in the wood line, towards the wood line. And ultimately, that was the decision of the Public Works and Environment Committee unanimously to move forward with location C. Both location B and C had tree cutting associated with them, but not lots of trees, but some trees. And I would describe them as large bullpines in both cases. Location A had no tree removal, obviously it's just an open area out there. Location C also had the least amount of impact to any recreational elements, we would not lose any long term. There might be temporary closure of, for example, the basketball court during certain elements of construction, but ultimately that was the location. There were a number of abutters that joined us on this walking tour, and I could say sort of generally that that seemed to meet with their, that was like the best spot that they thought as well, maybe with some exception. We can't move forward with the project until we identify a location once. The location has been identified, hopefully through this vote tonight. They will then be able to do some geo-syntec work where they'll actually do some borings and stuff to make sure that the ground conditions are suitable for placement of the water tower. There's no reason to believe they wouldn't be, but should they find that the location is not suitable for building, they'd be back in front of us to, what's our next step? I think we all recognize that the standpipe needs to go on the high point of the city, hence at the Noble Pines, city-owned property. There's already the infrastructure that goes there, the water line that comes from the water plant to fill it, the water lines that leave there to distribute the water to the city. So, to move it arguably any other place other than at the park would be quite an undertaking, not impossible, but very, very difficult and expensive. So, the location recommended by Public Works and Environment Committee is location C. So, with that, I'd move that the council support that recommendation of location C.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Counsel Witham moves to accept the committee's recommendation of location C, seconded by Counsel Vincent. Again, the motion for the council is on the acceptance of committee's recommended location, outlocation C. Discussion, further discussion, Counsel Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the location C is the best place, in my opinion, for the tank. You know, coming up the hill and seeing it right there, it just didn't work, and over to the sides, C is the best place. It's tucked kind of back. I mean, yeah, when you get to the top of the hill, you'll see it, but I think it's the best location. It may be a little bit, a smidgen more due to fill, if they decide to take the pedestal and bring it up a little bit, but other than that, I think the best location is C, and I'm urging all councils to fall for it, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counsel Goodwin?
Yeah, obviously it's very early days, but I also think the location C is the best of the ones that we have reviewed so far. I do think that, you know, per prior discussion this evening, once we get into the details of planning that, there are mature trees that are being cut, I would want to see some sort of proposal to replant some of those trees, again, to soften the appearance of that tower in the neighborhood and to the adjacent playground. And I'd also be curious about the disposal of the existing tower, which is probably contaminated with lead, if nothing else, and also just, you know, kind of an interesting historic artifact. I don't know if the Historic District Commissioner or anyone else would want to, or the museum, I should say, would have interest in doing documentation prior to that being removed. But anyways, I'm in favor of location C.
Great, thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counsel Witham?
Yeah, just piggyback on Counsel Goodwin's comment that this is the early phase, this is sort of the next step, right? So, now the engineers can get to work and move it towards what I'll call final design. Once that is done, obviously, there would be a planning board process for approval of the sighting of that, at which time there would be, you know, drawings and renderings and could discuss things like buffering and all of that. So, and obviously that would then trigger formal abutter notification, so there would be yet another opportunity for abutters to provide feedback on sort of final design. So, but this is an important step in the process so that we can move forward, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Counsel Parity Catanzaro?
Yeah, thank you, you answered the, one of the questions I was about to ask, which was about the formal abutter notice, I really appreciate that. Multiple of them showed up to the walk-through and shared their thoughts, and I'm also happy to hear that a lot of them also agreed about location C. I did notice in the minutes that there was per ha, I don't know if I was misreading the minutes, but it sounded like there was perhaps another location that was suggested, and there wasn't really a wrap-up of that, so I just wonder if that was, the engineer said that wouldn't work, or if it was just an idea that didn't really gain traction.
Yeah, that was brought up by one of the abutters, Maggie Larson, happens to be the school board chair. I'll call it C2, so it's, as I look at it, to the left of location C, so not far from there. And the engineer was very clear in their outline of the locations that day as we walked around, that it is possible that based upon the geo-syntec work in trees and all of that, that this location might be tweaked a little bit left or right. So, if it tweaks sort of back around the side, it's going to move it closer to where that abutter Ms. Larson pointed out. So, yeah, we didn't formally evaluate it, but- So, yeah, we didn't formally evaluate it, but it's sort of near, it's closest to C.
Okay. That's really helpful, thank you. I also agree with the others who've said that I think C looks like the best location. I'm always sad to lose some trees, especially some really big old ones, but the location of the trees that need to be lost for C, they're not cutting down like a view line between a house or between any other buildings, so I think the impact there will be less. And I definitely agree with Councilor Goodwin that it would be good to see where we can mitigate the loss of those trees by planting some there or elsewhere around the city. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. If you are in favor of the acceptance of the committee's recommendation of C, location C, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council Wytham?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The location has been accepted. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our second item under other, which is a vote to waive Chapter 12 Streets and Sidewalks, Section 12.1, which is essentially the moratorium period for Mount Vernon Street. What are the wishes of the council? Council Wytham?
Move that we waive the moratorium and allow the installation of the gas line, provided that trench repair is the more robust trench repair as outlined by the city manager.
So the motion for the council is to allow for the waiver to go forward, to waive the moratorium, but making sure to include a robust trench repair. There a second? Seconded by Council Parity-Catanzaro. All right, motion for the council is to waive Chapter 12 Streets and Sidewalks, Section 12.1, moratorium period for Mount Vernon Street, and to include a robust trench repair for said trench that will be created for the gas line. Discussion, Council Pepin?
I'll be voting for this, but I really have a high time voting for it because it kind of like opens us up for everybody else to do this. And the whole idea of this chapter is, is that we send out notices and tell people that there's going to be a moratorium on the road. If you're going to want to do anything, any digging or whatever, please try to do it before now or hold your peace till the moratorium's up. What irritates me the most is years ago, you hot-top a road, and it's like, who's going to put the first shovel in the middle of the road? It's quick, before the hot-top's even cool. So that drives me up a tree. I am concerned that this doesn't kind of like open up the door that, okay, we're so short of a period of time, that's the reason why I'd be voting for it. But I am a little concerned that we open the door now, there'll be more coming. I mean, I can see if it's a total emergency that, you know, the gas light ruptures or whatever, and you have to do it, that's a different story. But it defeats the, this defeats the need, what we've been trying to accomplish out of it. So I just want to voice my opinion on it, so, thank you.
Other discussion? Council Parity-Catanzaro?
Yeah, I'll be supporting this. I think in reading the supporting materials, it was really helpful to see some of the context, and I think, you know, the moratorium ending September 30th, to me, it's not a big stretch to want to protect it for those additional two months. We certainly waive these types of things for a variety of reasons, and I think the reasoning was pretty sound, especially with our international supply chain issues, that it's going to be really hard that late in the year for the contractors to have access to the right kind of asphalt to do this additional upgraded patch that we talked about. So it feels like a real win-win that they get their, you know, new gas hookup boiler, whatever it is that they need before the winter, and also we get more robust repair of the road. I certainly hear Council Pepin's concern, though, and I wonder if when the moratorium ends is tied to exactly when something is paved? And the reason I bring that up is if this is an issue due to, you know, if a moratorium ends on September 30th, if that's always going to be hard for people to be able to do their projects after that, do we want to move it earlier in the summer? If we put it there at the end of September because we really don't want people to be paving through winter, like then the deadline should be in the spring? Like, I just wonder why September 30th was there and if it's tied somehow to the project, if that's something we could look at going forward.
Thank you. Other discussion? Council Wytham?
Yeah, the roadway was paved three years ago, September 30th, so it's a three-year moratorium. That's when we were paving in the fall. We're now paving in the spring, so the moratoriums would end April, May now. So we've changed that just by our paving schedule. I support this because of the tight proximity to the end of the moratorium, and it does provide the more robust patch. If we waited to the end of September, the patch would be the width of the gas line. Right now, they will patch, I believe, 10 or 15 feet to each side. So it's a, they're going to spend a whole lot more money on hot-top to do it earlier. I will say that Manager Moore did reach out to me with regard to this, whether or not he wanted to run it through committee or not. In the interest of time, because it's summertime and we don't meet as frequently, I asked that he approached the mayor to put it on the agenda tonight without running it through committee. A lot of this discussion would take place at committee, so I apologize for vetting it out here, but I thought, just in the interest of time, it made sense. So appreciate the manager reaching out, and I do appreciate the mayor putting it on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Absolutely. Other discussion? Council Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a point of clarification. If it's a three-year moratorium, and if road's done in August, it just comes back around three years later till August?
Correct.
Right, okay. I just was, thank you.
Other discussion? Council Goodman?
Two thoughts. One, just for those that are unfamiliar with context and really just kind of a dig at our own ability to maintain our sidewalks, we, in our packet, we have a photo of the context here. So the road itself may have been repaved three years ago. We did not rebuild the adjacent sidewalk, which is crumbling asphalt and looks like garbage and also unsafe. So I'm deeply unconcerned about cutting into the street at this location to enable this family to put in a gas line and have a high-quality patch, curb-to-curb patch put in place. I guess on the high-quality patch here, the curb-to-curb, obviously nicer, is hot asphalt, is it like an infrared patch? I don't know if anyone has any more information on what makes this superior, just for sort of the public record.
I defer to the director.
Yeah, without objection. Director Babinski, will you ask for your help?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The question is whether or not the, or the nature of the patch and the longevity of that and what we're proposing to do, it is not use of infrared technology. We literally will require the contractor, in this case, it will likely be a sub to Unitil, the gas company, will make them excavate out and mill out 10 feet on either side of the trench, basically, so that you, what gets replaced is brand-new asphalt in that area. The robust aspect, if you will, is that width around the standard opening to accommodate the piping, if you will. And so the purpose of that is just longevity. It maintains the integrity of the pavement. That road was paved three years ago. The end of the September will come out of moratorium, but we want to make sure that we maximize that as far as we can. And with regard to the sidewalks, that's certainly a future and a policy decision, but when we did those roads, we just did the actual surface of the road. We did not incorporate the sidewalk component. I will say, though, that to the extent there's any disturbance of the sidewalk on either end or on one side of Mount Vernon, they will be required to patch that and repair that as well. So we'll, you know, based on the outcome of tonight's meeting, we'll incorporate any of those conditions with the applicant, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Council Goodman, you're still recognized.
Thank you. So just to restate what the director said, it sounds like the robustness of the patch has to do with the size of the area being replaced in that the asphalt will hold up better because the surface area is larger and they're able to do ground preparation, and it's just more robust. Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Director Babinski while we have him here? Council Gibson?
Yeah, just curious. I don't know if this should be Cody, you, or someone else. If this is what you would say would be a desired type of repair, why do we allow the bad repairs to be made when it's outside of the moratorium?
I would just say, Counselor, we do have standards that we do follow with regard to any non or a routine trench opening that involves compaction testing, it involves saw cutting the trench itself and making sure the edges are straight and so that there is a good connection and a good patch with asphalt. Time of year is important also. If it's during the winter, for instance, we do allow coal patch, and then we require the contractor or the utility to come back and remove the coal patch with hot-mix. I mean, I think we certainly monitor conditions and follow up with regard to quality control and so forth. Sometimes I do heave and so forth. We try to monitor that and then follow up accordingly. Yep.
Council Gibson, you're still recognized?
I understand what you're saying and why, but, okay, basically, what's a typical patch is something like this, about right?
It depends. I mean, you know, it depends on the opening itself. Could be three feet wide, could be, you know, 10 feet wide. Yeah, depending upon what.
Well, my question is if the 10 to the left, 10 to the right is a much superior repair to the road surface, why do we allow?
Oh, I see your question. Yeah, policy and past practice, particularly on a newer road, we want to maintain that pavement life as long as possible. If we're paving a road, well, we're trying to get, like Mount Vernon, we're trying to get maybe 15 years out of it, pushing maybe even 20. You start cutting into it at a younger age, and then it defeats that, so.
Council Gibson, before we go too far into the weeds of patch repair and our own internal policy.
Okay, I'll just let it go. I'll talk to you later.
I would ask that maybe this be a conversation for Public Works and the Environment if we want to change our patch policy, but in terms of this particular project, I ask that we kind of stick to whether we will or will not be supporting it. Hope that's okay. Other questions for Director Babinski while we have him? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Other discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of, let me see if I can remember what we had, favor of waiving Chapter 12 Streets and Sidewalks, Section 12.1, moratorium period on Mount Vernon Street with a robust trench repair, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Council Wytham?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Pepin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes, the robust repair.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The waiver has been granted. All right, that brings us to item 17, which is comments by visitors. The Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into any debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Anyone who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. This will bring us to closing comments by council members. Council Cameron, since you did the pledge, you were up first. That's my rule, remember? I think you guys keep forgetting that.
All right, I'm up first. Well, I'll start off first by saying happy birthday to Derek Gagnon, who has been one of our filmers. Today is his birthday, so happy birthday, Derek. We also have, Don't Trash Somersworth, this Saturday, the 19th, I'm two to three. We will meet at Milo Lane and do Old Rochester Road. And I will be scheduling a special cleanup on September 27th, to be announced, and that's all I have. Oh, wait, don't forget National Night Out, also, coming right up. Thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Council Barry. You're up.
Hopefully, I keep this very short. I'm very sad to hear that we are going to be losing some coast bus routes. I understand why. I think this is one of the first things to come, unfortunately. I think we're going to see more and more. Hopefully, we can reduce as much as we can. That's going to impact our community, especially understanding that the shipyard route is going to be impacted. That's very sad to hear. I'm extremely excited to hear that we might get 6.9 million towards the library. As you said, reach out, help us make sure we get that, because again, that's going to help our city, that's going to help our tax base if we can get that. So if you have a voice, please use it. Help us get this. Yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. I guess the rain, did you guys hear that? It's wild. Council Pepin, you're up next.
Did they leave their windows open?
I know, and hopefully no one left their windows open.
No, I'd like to just thank the Legion and the Post for all they do, and thank you for your dedication and your service to our country. It's really deeply appreciated. Without you people, we wouldn't be sitting here today. So thank you very, very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Council Pepin. Council Vincent, you're up.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Legion and VFW. I think there's, I think that's it here, but if I'm missing somebody, thank you. Thank you for your service. Just one comment, and it's actually kind of towards Council Cameron. You had said a few months back that if the, if all the wards got in and did cleanup, you would have some reward. And I know that Ward 2 had the most cleanup, so what am I going to be getting? Please, next meeting, let me know. So, because you made the promise. If we have to reel back the film to see that you said that, we will. So I just want to let you know.
Will you take it back from the group?
Your Honor, this is my time to talk. I'm sorry. If you could just please cut her off. Just kidding, Nancy, thank you.
Thank you. Council Gibson, you're next.
I don't know if I can follow that. The really sad thing to me about the coast bus schedule is that this, I'm afraid, only represents the first hit. We had a federal government that seems to think that it's more important to preserve the wealth of individuals over ensuring that their responsibilities as a governing body are met. And the really unfortunate thing is that we're also seeing it at the state level. The legislature is once again fighting the school funding issue. And again, it's, it all comes down to protecting wealth. As long as there's no kind of broad-based tax in this state, the burden of paying taxes will always fall on the people least able to pay that tax bill. I live in Sherwood Glen. I'm one of the lucky ones. I can pay my tax bill. I'm not worried about being forced out of my home, but I know from the list of tax deeds that were being, I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but properties considered for tax deeds, a lot of them are in the mobile home parks in our community. And again, this is the fact that because of the taxing system in this state, the burden always falls on the people least able to afford it. And my one wish going forward, I don't know if I'll live to see that day, is that enough people in the state will wake up and realize that in the long run, everybody pays the price. Because when services aren't provided because the communities can't afford to fund them, that affects the citizens in those communities, which affects the citizens in other communities because we're all one big community. because we're all one big community in the final analysis. And we all depend on each other in one way or another. And that seems to be something that's being lost in this country. And it's really tragic. Can I get off my soapbox now?
That was great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Counsel Parity-Catanzaro?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with a lot of what you said. And I, I think that, you know, it was part of a community development conversation earlier, unrelated to Summersworth, but of course, all I could think about was Summersworth. And a lot of the conversations around community identity and feeling part of a group. And I just wanted to raise again something that I know Counsel Goodwin had raised when we were talking about various aspects of the master plan and that concept of neighborhoods and really defined neighborhoods within the city. And there are really good examples of a couple of really defined neighborhoods. And, you know, our, our wards are kind of like slices of pie. Sometimes people don't always identify with what ward they're in. But, you know, I just would encourage us to look at that again as we, as we look at doing things in our community. The, the National Night Out is another great opportunity for people to just sort of gather together. And I, I hope, Mr. Mayor, if you know the exact date, drop it in here at the end of our comments because I want to make sure that that's on my calendar. I really just want to extend a warm welcome to all of our new folks. I'm, I'm really excited about our new executive office here, our new city manager, our new finance director, our new executive assistant. You are people that we are going to be having a lot of conversations with. And I know that you're also like the frontline people to our community. So I just really appreciate that we have such a strong team. And, you know, I know I speak for everyone when I say just please reach out to us at any time. And I just really look forward to this next chapter. I also want to thank the folks for coming out and talking about the POW MIA flag and really just highlighting that, bringing that to our attention. It's a good education point, just as the flag itself is. And I appreciate you sticking with us for the whole meeting here. I also wanted to say that an item that was on our agenda, was it just the last meeting? Or, or one of the last ones? But I did see online that, that Nostos closed on their, their lease rental purchase, whatever it was, down at the Plaza. So I'm just very excited to see that moving forward. That was something that we supported recently and I'm, I'm really excited about that. And finally, just to, just to answer Counsel Vincent's question about the solar array and various thoughts, I guess I kind of thought that some sort of, you know, edging landscape, something would, would come towards the end. But I, for one, just think it looks really exciting and really great. And I think it makes us look like a really forward-thinking community. When I was in process to moving to Summersworth back in 2017, this was something that we were talking about. And I, I can't remember who it was, but people were like, oh, you're moving to Summersworth. They're getting a new big solar park and whatever. And it was talked about as like Summersworth is doing all these cool things. And it's been so many years. And I know a lot of different things have happened where it's fallen through in a couple of places. But it's just really cool to see that. I think it's beautiful. Obviously, anything we can do to make sure that we're mitigating the impact on the direct abutters, I think it totally makes sense, especially if we expect that of others. But those are just my thoughts on that. So thanks.
Thank you. Yes, August 5th, 4:00 to 7:00 is National Night Out. Just informed. August 5th, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Counsel Michu, you are recognized.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also like to welcome the new city manager, his assistant, and the new finance director. Welcome to the city staff. Hopefully, you will enjoy it. And I also like to mention on, once again, National Night Out is August 5th. And, and this year, it's not going to be down in Ward 5, Jubissons Playground. It's being relocated to Memorial Drive, actually. And one of the bigger reasons is because it's actually getting bigger. So it's something really exciting. I really hope the community does come out and support the police department of this because I know several of the officers are putting a lot of time and effort in developing this for the community. So I'm hoping there's a big turnout for the community for this. It's always a good time. And also, I'd like to mention on Sunday, August 10th, it will be the annual Hilltop Classic Car Show right here on Main Street. That'll be Sunday morning. It'll be between Fayette Street and Washington Street. And that's going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I fill up my calendar with my event. Next is Counsel Witham.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited about the potential of some congressionally-directed spending from Senator Shaheen for the library. And it just reminded me that over the years, Senator Shaheen, Senator Hassan, certainly Representative Pappas, have been strong advocates for the Hilltop City. Regardless of your political affiliation, your political slant, I could just tell you that these three folks have advocated for us here in Summersworth. Whether it was congressionally-directed spending or other grants and loan opportunities, they have been by our side. So just another thanks to them, and in particular, Senator Shaheen in this case. I almost feel as though they live here, right? Because they're, they're so supportive of what we, we are after here. You know, with regard to the, the solar field, like Counsel Parity-Catanzaro, I think it looks exciting. It looks better than a barren landscape of a superfund site. It's financially viable for the city. Counsel Goodwin is right. We wrestled with it at the planning board level for some sort of screening. I can only speak for myself. I'm, I'm scared to death of the EPA. The minute you say you want to do something, it can get into a quagmire. We've been talking about the solar field for decades here in the community. And one of the reasons we've been talking about it for decades is all of the hurdles with the EPA. So that causes me some pause. It's a pretty tight site along Blackwater Road because the, around the whole landfill is the methane gas capture system that vents off in those stacks. So there, there's one like pretty close to Blackwater Road. So there's not a lot of room to work with there. I don't know, maybe we could get large flower pots or be creative. I don't know. But, and it's, besides the EPA, there's the awkwardness of we own the land, we're leasing to the developer, who's going to, it, it's just this awkwardness of the whole situation. And none of these are insurmountable. We could probably tackle them all, but they just take time and kind of really thinking outside of the box. So as this develops and, you know, maybe we could revisit it with city staff just to kind of, is there anything we can do? And I'm not sure there is, but maybe there is. I'm not sure. And lastly, just welcome to David, Hannah, and Jordan. Excited to have you on board. It's like a big reset here in the city of Summersworth. We've been ever so comfortable with, with our prior staff, just kind of, we've known them and how they operate. And we have to relearn all of that. And I think it's going to be a fun learning curve. I'm excited about it. I think it's a good reset and just want to welcome you all on board. So thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, Counsel Goodwin?
Thank you. Yes, wanted to echo my fellow counselors in welcoming the new manager, finance director, and executive assistant. Very excited to have you all on the team and to have some fresh perspective and energy. And just to circle back on, on the solar conversation, hearing Counsel Witham's comments on the complexity of the site, and I completely understand that sentiment and where, where it's coming from. I think what my frustration is, is that it would have been something, would not have been an issue if it were a value that we had instilled from the beginning and that it was drawn in and it was part of our negotiation with the developer and it was part of our conversation with the EPA. At this stage in the, yeah, it's going to be very difficult to go back and do anything. But if we had that as our core value and part of our, you know, presentation for anything that we do with municipal property, and it was a requirement or an expectation that this was going to happen, it would be a non-issue. It would have been solvable. It would have been a decorative fence. It would have been a planting berm that was approved by the EPA and the developer understood. But, you know, it's, it's, that's, I think for me, one of the things that I, as discussed earlier, just have a frustration with, we, I think we've been in a long, you know, the, a long-term mindset of, you know, cutting cost, which I, which I very much understand. We don't want to impact the tax rate. But at the same time, I think our community is worthy of doing the right sort of investment. We, we are not afraid of investing in our community. We've done major investments via schools or the fire station or the police station, soon to be with the library, with our sidewalk repair program. But what I would say to people is that these are, these are generation-long, sometimes multi-generation-long investments, and we should do them right. And thinking about the aesthetics is really important because we are going to live with our shortsightedness if we do not. And we don't want a community that's ugly. We are worthy of having a beautiful place to live in. And we are the stewards of managing that aesthetic and that beauty and making those decisions. And I personally don't take that lightly. And I think that we, as stewards of that responsibility, can and should do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to Item 19, which is future agenda items. There are a handful mentioned already, which was maybe a discussion about the solar array and some screening. I would ask maybe that be something the Public Works and Environment Committee consider. And then gas line, or really, I should just call it as like paving patch policy would also be something I would ask Public Works and the Environment Committee to consider. Are there any other future agenda items I didn't catch? Okay, sounds good. All right. Brings us to Item 20, which is non-public. We have none. And last on our agenda is adjournment. Counsel Vincent moves that the city council meeting, uh, city council stay in adjournment until our next regularly scheduled meeting, seconded by Counsel Barry. Question for the council is adjournment. If you're in favor, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.